All right, for the record, just make sure that we have a sign up sheet in the back. If anyone wishes to speak, make sure you please sign up. The sheet is in the back. Would anyone stand for a pledge of allegiance and prayer, please?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father in heaven, we're so grateful to come before you this evening at this special council meeting. We ask that you'll bless us as a council as a whole, that our minds will be open, that we'll listen, that we'll make the best decision for this city to move it forward. We ask that you'll bless the leaders of this city, the leaders of our country, and a special blessing upon our police and firemen, that you'll protect them as well as our military. We ask that you'll bless the citizens here tonight, and the citizens in our community, and as we depart, we'll go home in safety. In these things, so you say and ask in the name of thy son Jesus Christ, Amen.
Start calling you Reverend Jones. All right, we have a determination quorum. Looks like we have a quorum tonight. Comments of council members and special recognitions or resolutions. Council Giles?
Thank you, sir. For the record, I wanted to share with the administration some comments, a phone call that I received from some constituents today. At the corner of 46th and Elmhurst, there was a stop, there's no street sign there. There's no old sign, it's not one of the new signs, and so we need to get a sign out there. The other concern was at the corner of 47th and Elmhurst as well. One of the constituents may be aware that people are parking, I guess, right at the stop sign, you know, which in turn is making it some visibility issues with the four-way stop and having some kind of, having some issues with potential near misses or car accidents. And so they asked that maybe that was something that DPW could potentially look into, maybe putting in no parking, you know, or something for so many feet up to the sign or something like that. So just wanted to make, you know, the administration, DPW aware, and maybe the guys can go out and take a look at that and make some adjustments if needed. Thanks.
All right. Council Freeman?
I wanted to know if the city had any recollection about putting a grocery store into where the marsh is closing. I think their last day is May the 16th. And also, I wanted to start on the energy savings program, if maybe the date's May the 8th at 3:00, May the 10th, Wednesday at 3, or the 24th at 3. And then I want everybody to note that their heavy trash pickup has been moved to the 3rd Tuesday of the month instead of the 1st. And also-
Heavy trash is the 3rd?
It's the 3rd Tuesday of the month.
It's the 3rd week?
Yeah.
Do they, do they need to call for heavy pickup? Or is it, do they just set it out?
They're gonna do heavy trash pickup tomorrow. We're gonna have two times for the month of May.
Okay.
The 2nd and the 16th.
Okay.
And you're able to put up five items.
Okay.
Okay. And then another one, I had another one. The public safety, I know we had a tragedy at Midhauffer and Pendleton Pike, and I asked Deputy Chief Curtis Bixby to get me accident report. And within the five past months, there were 12 accidents, four fatalities, and seven personal injuries, and six classified as property damage. I wanted to know if we could do maybe a flashing light or something before you hit that intersection? I don't know if it's the flashing light that people are trying to beat when they're turning, or maybe a warning sign or something.
You're talking along Pendleton Pike.
Mm-hmm.
And that's a, that's a state highway. So we're gonna definitely have to work with the state on that issue if we wish to alter any kind of way. That I'm pretty sure of. Okay. Any other councilors?
Mr. President?
Council Wells?
I have a few things I'd like to bring up. For Council Freeman's concern on the marsh, that is in my district too. And I've been in contact with a gentleman that, he owns, I think, three IGA stores down in southern Indiana. And he has expressed interest in this marsh store. I've been conferring with him on several occasions, and he is actually driving up this week, and I'm going to meet with him, show him the store, show him the neighborhood, and let him, I think he's already made an attempt to talk to the landlord about the possibility of what it's gonna take for him to rent that facility. So there is things that are happening, and I don't know where this is going to go, but we're gonna keep on top of it. The other thing was, I was in contact with Mr. Lox today about the 49th and Mitchener. I got a call from a neighbor that lives right there on that intersection, and one of the storm drains is plugged up. And as we know, that the, that intersection floods badly, and I think probably the last thing we probably want to see is one of them storm drains not being able to drain. I spoke to Mr. Lox, oh, about mid-morning, I think, and the lady called me back late in the day and said that, you know, expressed concern that she hadn't seen anybody. And then, lastly, I've had, I'd like to address a concern that's been brought to my attention. Shortly after the last mid-month meeting concerning my proposal 5 on the animal shelter ordinance, I've had repeated calls by individuals that were hoping for an animal shelter. They were led to believe that somehow that I failed in the shelter moving it forward because of the comments made that I wasn't, that it wasn't properly presented and properly written. But for the record, I didn't write it, our attorney wrote it. And the other thing was that the, in presentation, we only allowed three minutes to present it. So I think we should probably, in the next committee meetings, we should be allowed a little more time. So that's all I got. Thank you.
All right, Council Wells. Anyone else?
Well, I got a couple of comments. To the administration, we still doing pothole repair, correct? I know we doing some major overhaul on the streets, but German Church is a mess, and that's heavy traffic street. Also, that bridge right there, just south of 56th and, and German Church, we need to think about or see how we can widen that bridge some kind of way. That'd be a major project for, for the city, I understand, but I know from past experience, I've worked accidents right there because it is pretty tight. So we really need to take that into consideration in the pavement. And then also, there were some potholes that were being reported, and just want to make sure that when, you know, I know I'll call DPW in reference to those potholes, and if we can get back on that some kind of way, sir, that'd be, that'd be great, I appreciate it. Anything else, councilors?
Approval of minutes, regular meeting of April 3rd, 2017, and April 19th, 2017. Motion on the floor?
Make the motion.
Council Well, Wheeler?
Second.
Council Freeman? Any discussion? All in favor, show a hand. Any opposed? Unanimous. Approval of the minutes. Signing of vouchers, approval of claims, and authorization of payments. Is a motion on the floor?
Make the motion.
Council Wheeler?
Second.
Second, Council Jones. Any discussion? All in favor, body of show of hands? Any opposed? Unanimous. Pay the bills. Report of committees, committee as a whole.
So we hosted a series of meetings in reference to proposal number 7 and proposal number 8. And it, from those meetings, we were presented with an amended version to proposal number 7 and an amended version to proposal number 8. Well, we're talking in reference to the rates and, and the charges for the use of services on proposal number 7. And then proposal number 8, we were talking about the, more or less, the bond issue. So there are two amendments that we're gonna be addressing tonight. So you had a chance later on to talk about it. So it was recommended that it goes forward for consideration to the full council, and that's where we are tonight. Anyone else have anything else to add? Take away. All right. Next on the agenda, we have the public hearing in reference to proposal number 7. At this time, I want to reemphasize that there is a sign up sheet in back of the room for anyone wishes to make a comment tonight and during the public hearing. You have your chance. Okay? The public hearing is now open for comments of citizens. The sheet back there in the back? Deputy Chief?
I have the first name on it.
Yeah, but I still need the sheet. We need the sheet for the record, sir.
No, it's the white one. It's the white sheet.
Oh, it's the white sheet. Chief, is the white, is it some white sheet?
That's for citizens' comment.
Okay. So you wanna do citizen comments, or you want the public hearing?
I want public hearing right now.
So did you sign the public hearing?
I sure did.
Okay. I knew you was on the thing.
(laughing).
I'm ready to participate in the conversation.
We try to stay in order, Mr. President.
Yeah, I understand, sir.
All right, first on the list is Mr. Curry.
Carlton Curry, 11230 Whitingwood Court, citizen and registered voter of our fair city. I have four points. So the first represents a bit of history, and it shows that the more things that happen sometimes are more than the same. I'm holding a letter here from the mayor, signed by the mayor, signed by the president of the utility service board, talking about how this utility was to be done. And just reading it very selected on it, "An estimated 10% overall rate reduction, and 15% for water and 2% for sewer would be expected. Savings of $1,500,000 a year for the, for the rate payers. Lower rates making Lawrence a more attractive place for business and increase economic development and other things." Well, there might be in the people in the room that are surprised at that letter, so I'll read the signatures. Mayor Deborah Cantwell and Karen Horst Powers dated November 1, 2007. Secondly, I'm in favor of the discussion, the outcome of the special meeting you had as a committee as a whole, and I hope that the council will adopt both proposals number 7 and number 8. Now, in that particular meeting, there was no opportunity for a public comment. Now, the question that was asked, and just for the record, someone asked, "Well, when was the last fiscal report presented to the utility service board, and what did it say?" And there was some guessing going on. So I have that report. It was done on March of 2013. And at that time, there was a small balance in the operating fund, but it didn't last long. Because at the mandatory report that communities make, municipalities, in a newspaper, general circulation, they give the cash balances of all the accounts of the city. And the cash balance for December 31 of 2013 had gone from a positive number to a negative 1.8 million and something. Pretty heavy overspending there. And that was the beginning of the problems that we had. Now, fast forward to the last year of the last term, and I just do that not for my prejudicial remark, but just to put it in the calendar. It was either October or November of that year, and I couldn't find in my notes the date, but it was discovered that the fund shortfall in the water's operating account caused our rather good rate for bond rating went to junk. That put the city in a position where it really is no position to borrow money, at least in my estimation, with some experience in these matters. Now, come to today, which is where you've been wanting me to get to, 'cause I'm closer to the finish. The state, as I have mentioned before, in the state statutes, require that a municipality owning a utility under the chapter have to furnish reasonably adequate services and things. And that means that rates and charges too low to meet the requirements are unlawful. There's about a dozen requirements in here, and I've sent copies to all of you on the council so you have that. Which brings me to my first point. I'm still in favor for it, and I hope that you will all consider this very carefully, because failure to pass this puts us in a position of jeopardy, I think, that the utility could be considered to be as a troubled utility, and the control of that utility would then move from the city of Lawrence, which we obtained through, you know, local control, to a state agency. And ladies and gentlemen, I think you'll like the rates that you have before you and the amended versions tonight a lot better than you'll like the ones that would come from a certain agency with which I've had some experience. Thank you. I hope I didn't overrun my time.
All right, thank you, Mr. Curry.
Thank you.
Next on the list, we have Chris Downs. State your name, address for the record, please, sir.
Chris Downs, 6832 Copper Mountain Court. Thank you, council, for giving me the opportunity to speak. I bring a little bit of a unique perspective, I think, and I wanted to show up and discuss proposal number 7. I've been in Lawrence for 20 years, and had a lot of experience in engineering and financing and analysis and rate, associated rate schedules, rate work on municipal utilities. Worked with the accounting firms very closely, Umball, Crowe, London Witty, on a lot of projects, spent a lot of time in rate studies and analysis for municipal utilities. I have no, no dog in this fight, by the way. There's, I live here, I don't want to see rates go up any more than the next guy, but I spend a lot of time looking at utilities and junk bond statuses and the financial condition of the Lawrence utilities. It's gonna need to be, it's gonna have to be addressed. I know that this can's been kicked maybe down the, down the road a little bit, and it's left in your lap, but, but you've gotta do this. This is a, this is a economic development strategy. It's a, you've gotta, you gotta figure out this utility. You can't, you can't continue to operate the way that it is. And I've seen, I've seen the water treatment plant, and I understand the infrastructure. It, it needs to be addressed, and, and I don't even believe there's a lot of money in, in capital projects, but at least this is a really, a really good first step. And like I said, I've, I've worked with, does, scores and scores, maybe hundreds of municipal utilities. Your rate of $3.72 a K-gallon, I believe, is what it is now, and it's gonna go up, but it's still, even with the proposed rate change, it's still very competitive. I look at rate schedules all the time. I see $12 or $14 a K-gallon on water in some places. I've seen some utilities taken over by the Regulatory Commission, or the State Board of Accounts, or however that, however that's transferred. You definitely do not want that. Rates will still be very competitive. I know it's a tough pill to swallow and a hardship on a lot of people, but the average water bill's still something very reasonable and manageable, I think. I support proposal 7, and if there's anything I can do from a outside perspective, I'd be glad to lend that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Downs.
Thank you.
Next, we have Bob Sterrett.
Thank you for allowing me to approach the council tonight and give you my thoughts about this. I normally don't get involved, but, and I've certainly not learned it as the last two fellows.
Just state your rec-
Oh, Bob Sterrett, 9644 Megan Lee Drive.
Yes, sir.
I started out my deal here with the city of Lawrence when I was councilman for three terms, and then mayor for one term, and spent a lot of work for a telephone company for, in the rates department, know a little bit about that. One thing you don't want to do is allow this company to go anywhere but wherever we're at. Those folks that they've been talking about are scary, and I've seen it, seen them try to take us over before. You've got a really great bunch of pit fellows and gals working at this department, and they're doing a great job. In fact, most of them I hired a long time ago. So they're, they're really good people, and I know you don't want, as council people, to raise anything, 'cause that's bad, right? That people come down and get that to you. So it's one of the things that during my term, terms of office and as, in other, other particular places, but I just don't want you folks to, to struggle back and get frightened of that. This is really the thing to do, and I agree with the gentleman that were ahead of me, you don't want to get involved with anything in downtown. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sterrett.
Thank you.
By the way, to wish Sterrett building his name out there, I take it?
(laughing).
All right, sir. All right. Next on-
Michael Sheath.
Michael Sheath. Maybe if I take these off, I'll go over again. State your name and address for the record, please, sir.
Michael Sheath, 5047 Long Iron Drive. Appreciate the chance to speak to the council. Some of you may have received an email from me earlier. I'm in support of the proposal as it is set up. Been here just four years, coming from northern Indiana. At that time, I was on a, we had our own well, our own septic system, so forth like that, and the costs for our water services here in the Lawrence township are very reasonable considering what all we get out of that. I look at it from standpoint of, I'm a senior citizen, retired, living on a fixed income, and an extra $20 a month is small compared to some of the issues we might experience without it being addressed appropriately. So I, I highly recommend that you go ahead and proceed with the rate increase, and look at it from the standpoint of people spend a buck or more for a bottle of water. And they go, I remember buying, buying water for $4 at the, at the movie theater. So $20 additional a month for 4,000 gallon of water is very reasonable, and I highly recommend that you approve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sheath.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, the public hearing is now closed. There, that was the last name on the sheet. Want unfinished business. Proposal number 7, 2017.
Proposal number 7, 2017, introduced by Councilor Chevlat. A proposal for an ordinance establishing the rates and charges for the use and services rendered by the waterworks of the city of Lawrence, Indiana.
Okay, I understand that we have an amended version to proposal number-
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there a motion on the floor for, we are moving forward with the amended version of proposal number-
Yeah, make a motion.
All right, motion for-
To approve the amended version.
Amended version proposal number 7. Second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Jones. Any discussion? Well, let me say this. I do believe that we do need to do something, and we do need to act. There's no doubt about it. The phrase of kicking a can down the road, yeah, well, let me just say what I have to say about that. I do believe that bad government is no fault of the people. The lack of government is no fault of the people. The people elect us to make decisions. The people elect us and entrust us to do the right thing. But at the same time, with certain rates being presented and whatever, at whatever cost, and was being presented tonight, there are a lot of my constituents that express their concern about the 68%. Though for some, they may seem not much, but for others, it is. And I have to consider that. I have to consider the majority of the what, of the information that I receive from my constituents. Just like I told them then, I tell them now, I would do what's in the best interest of what their concerns are, and I would make a decision. At the end of the day, the proposal that's being presented, I do understand. However, I disagree at the same time. I believe we could do, we could do more. And for my constituents, that's where I stand. So at this time, is there any further discussion? We're gonna do a roll call vote on this issue.
I have a comment.
Council Giles?
This is a decision for the council that I deem to be very tough. As many of you guys may know, I represent council district number one. In my district, we have some of the oldest infrastructure within the city, and some of those issues that need to be addressed. I also have a district where I probably, I think it's fair to say, with the utmost respect, and I love my district, that I have some of the most folks with some of the lower incomes in the city. But I hope for all of the folks who may be staying at home, I want to make sure that for the record that they understand that my vote here tonight will be for the future of Lawrence and for the future and the strength of our community and establishment, to make sure that District 1 stays a strong district as well. Hope that we can assist in our property value and make sure it's a place where folks can continue to raise their families in a safe place and present, and Lawrence can present clean and fresh water to, to our families. When I first came into this, I, I was adamantly looking for every reason not to vote in favor of, of the, of the rate increase, because I did understand the financial significance that it has on our family. But unfortunately, we have come to a time where my time here on the council is the time that I'm gonna have to make a tough decision and do the things that looks, that helps us for the next 40 years. So it is, it is my, gonna be my vote with the roll call that the city of Lawrence gets a new water treatment plant that will be able to serve our community for the next 40 to 50 years. We will no longer have, or at least, I won't say no longer, I don't want to put Scott too much on the, on the rigor, but that we will start moving forward to deal with brown water issues and some of those other issues that I see when I turn my shower on in the morning. So to my fellow councilmen, and Mr. President, you can count my vote before the roll call. I am in support of proposal, amended version of proposal number 7.
All right, we're gonna do the roll call.
Mr. President, if I could comment?
Okay, so we're, we're in discussion still.
Yeah. All right, let's go ahead, Council Jones. I, I also have got several emails, comments, done research. 2001 was the last rate increase, 2008 was a rate decrease. First proposal came out, I think, around 86% rate increase. We sent them back to the drawing board, they're now at 68%, helping seniors and others. And basically, our other alternative is, if we don't pass this, we're gonna lose it. And I think every council member up here, I can speak on this one point, we don't ever want to have to raise anything or raise any tax for anybody. But I think we've reached the point where if we don't do something, we're gonna be broke, and we're at that point. We can't go any farther. Thank you.
All right. We're still in discussion.
Mr. President?
Council Wells?
I spoke the other day with an operator of a water utility in Speedway, and one thing that she said that struck a chord with me was, and it's something that I've heard in speaking with the operator of our utility, former operators, people that just lived around here for a number of years, is, she said that they have a very successful water utility, and I asked her, I said, "What, what do you claim that to? I mean, what attribute to you having a successful utility?" And she said, "We do not have any issue with politics involved with our utility." And I would say, "Well, never-" And I would say, whatever the outcome of this vote is, for the sake of our city and the sake of our citizens, is that we try to either restructure the way the utility is operated as far as with the, maybe possibly with the utility service board, or however, but I would like to see the administration and this council work together that we could somehow minimize the input of politics into our utility for the sake of future administrations and future council and just for the future of our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Williams.
President Williams.
Oh, you're to Councilor Chavis.
I would just like to say that tough decisions take courage. They're not always popular. They don't necessarily feel good, but I think that voting in support of amended proposal number seven will put us on a path to have a very bright future for our water utility. Thank you.
Councilor Wheeler.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just like to note that, echo a lot of the points from my fellow councillors, this is a difficult decision. We don't want to make either decision, but we have to, and our city's history dictates that this has happened to us before, where we've lost our utility and the rates were jacked up, and then in fact, when we got the utility back, we had to decrease the rates to be a little bit more manageable. So I just encourage those so we not repeat our history and really try to make a difference. It's not going to feel comfortable, as Councilor Chavis has mentioned, it's not. It's going to be something we're going to go to bed tonight and not struggle with, but it's a decision that we have to make, and I want to make sure that everybody knows that everyone on this council has worked extremely hard and put in the due diligence to fully understand this.
All right. Any other counsel? Council Freeman.
I have looked over the 68% increase of the revised amended plan, and I still think at this time, I know it's a tough decision, a hard decision to make, and we're not here for a popular contest or whatever, but the rate hike for 68% for my constituents is too much at this time. Like IPL and Citizens Gas, they have raised the rates. The citizens had no say-so in that. The citizens have a say-so in this, and in my district, and my constituents are telling me, no rate hike at this time. Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion? All right, at this time, roll call vote for the amended version for proposal number seven.
Councilor Chavis?
Yes.
Councilor Freeman?
No.
Councilor Giles?
Yes.
Councilor Jones?
Yes.
Councilor Chevlot?
Yes.
Councilor Wells?
Yes.
Councilor Wheeler?
Yes.
Councilor Williams?
No.
Six to two, it is adopted.
All right, proposal number seven, amended version is adopted. Moving on to proposal number eight, amended version, there is amended version to proposal number eight as well. We have, we can read the title, it's the same title, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Proposal number eight, 2017, introduced by Councilor Chevlot. A proposal for an ordinance authorizing the acquisition, construction, installation by the city of Lawrence, Indiana of certain improvements and extensions to the city's waterworks, the issuance and sale of revenue bonds to provide funds for the payment of the costs thereof, and the collection, segregation, and distribution of the revenues of such waterworks and other related matters.
All right. At this time, is there a motion on the floor for proposal, amended version proposal number eight?
Motion to accept the amended version.
Councilor Chevlot? Second. Second. Councilor Jones? Discussion. I think this issue is pretty clear-cut. All right, we'll do a roll call vote on the amended version for proposal number eight as well at this time.
Councilor Chavis?
Yes.
Councilor Freeman?
No.
Councilor Giles?
Yes.
Councilor Jones?
Yes.
Councilor Chevlot?
Yes.
Councilor Wells?
Yes.
Councilor Wheeler?
Yes.
Councilor Williams?
No.
Six to two, it is adopted.
Proposal, amended version of proposal eight is adopted as well. All right, moving on to new business, proposal number nine, 2017. Can we read it by title at this time?
Proposal number nine, 2017, introduced by Councilor Chevlot. A proposal for an ordinance concerning the transfer of property related at 4423 North Shadlen Avenue to fund an animal shelter.
All right, proposal number nine, I will, this first reading.
That's not it.
No, wait, sorry, that's the wrong title.
Kathy, that's the first mistake since I've been on the council. That was a mistake.
There's a lot of paperwork that she's dealing with.
There must be a blue moon somewhere.
But I knew Councilor Chevlot, that look on your face, I was like, "Wait a minute, whoa."
I'll be retyping that cover sheet, so.
We can enjoy, we can have fun, too.
All right, let me reread. Proposal number nine, 2017, introduced by Councilor Chevlot. A proposal for an ordinance of the common council of the city of Lawrence, Indiana, amending the code to establish a no parking zone along East 63rd Street.
What I will say is that I thought I made the mistake because she don't make a mistake. Well, I'm going to sign this to code because this is first reading. Now, this is going to go in the code committee.
Mr. President?
Councilor Wheeler.
This question is directed towards Kathy. Our next scheduled code committee meeting is May 11th at 6:30, is that correct? I just want that on record before we leave.
It's May 15th.
Oh, May 15th, okay, perfect.
At 6:00.
May 15th at 6:00, okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, Council Administration.
Well, it took us a long time to get here, didn't it?
Mm-hmm.
Just wanted to read something to you that I took some time today to write because this applies to all of you councillors, because I've sat in your chair before and I've known what, how tough it is to make tough decisions and what that implies. So I just want to take this opportunity to commend the council for its role in making a difficult and critical decision for the future of Lawrence. As many of you have already demonstrated, making the right decision is not always the most popular decision. That is the mark of true leadership. With tonight's approval, we have finally set the utility on the right path toward fiscal accountability and responsibility and created the necessary funding to begin to repair and replace infrastructure that is years beyond its useful lifespan, in poor condition and limits our ability to meet continued demands with adequate, safe, and reliable water surface. These improvements will also allow Lawrence to continue to grow and prosper economically, which cannot happen without adequate, safe, and reliable water and sanitary sewer services. You have sent a message to our citizens and our business owners that the city of Lawrence is not ready to put aside politically motivated mismanagement of this most critical of services to our constituents, both for now and in the foreseeable future. Thank you for stepping up to the plate and exhibiting the very kind of leadership that this city needs. Thank you for moving Lawrence forward. We will continue to be a great city with great people.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
All right, citizens' comments, and there's a sheet on the back. Is there only one name on there?
No, there's two names.
Two names, okay. We already know who the first one is, right?
I'll shorten the line. You know, after coming up here and making a number of comments that were probably difficult to take, I also think it's appropriate to come up and say thank you to each and every one of you, whether you voted yes or no. You probably voted in accordance with your constituents as you saw it. However, you did the right thing for the city of Lawrence insofar as that same state statute from which I read, it's unlawful not to have rates and charges sufficient to keep the utility operating, and I'll add in safely because the safety of water is probably about every bit as much as most of us. I know I have a contact with water every day, but thankfully, I don't have a contact with the police and fire every day. But again, thank you for doing it.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. Well, it all depend on the contact with the police and fire, too, now. There's some good folk.
Well, I outread on this stuff.
All right, next we have Michelle Hawker. State your name and address for the record. We already know Mr. Curry very well.
Michelle Hawker, 11608 E 63rd Street. I'm here to speak about the proposed ordinance for the no parking.
Yes, ma'am.
That area is directly across from my house. It creates a public nuisance as well as a serious safety issue for those of us that live in that area, and I'm just begging you guys to please make that a no parking, an ordinance to make that no parking, it will keep the creeps away.
May the 15th, 2017, at 6 o'clock is the code committee, so you can have a chance to speak to the code committee about that issue at that time as well, just to let you know.
I'll be there.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Most adjourned.
Make the motion.
Council Wheeler?
Second.
We are adjourned.